Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I would like to call the October 20th Regular Meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District Order. My chair is all cattywampus up here. We do have a visitor tonight who would like to make a comment. Ms. Bobby Edmonds? There she is. Ms. Edmonds, welcome.
To the Honorable Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College, I am Bobby Edmonds. I am a local attorney, but I am also very involved with TCC just to help students expand their horizon along with Dr. Peter Jordan of the South Campus, who is always open to things. We had this opportunity last October. I participated in the Domestic Violence Summit that was being held at the Tarrant County South Campus. When I made my presentation, there was a visual presentation by the Government Department, Art Department, that is run by Professor Ravillo, Carlos Ravillo. And there were a few students there, and they had mannequins that depict survivors of domestic violence. And it was so overwhelming to me until when I was asked to be on the Committee for the Safe Haven Legacy of Women Committee, their annual event. I was over decorating, and I was a main party of the committee. I suggested that as a part of their annual Domestic Violence Prevention Month, that they should have a live exhibit similar to what I saw on Tarrant County College South Campus in October of 2015. After I gave them an overview of the idea, and I had taken a few pictures and showed it to them, they said, "We would like to have an exhibit at our annual event, annual luncheon," which was held on October the 15th. And there were over 600 people there, and Terry Bradshaw was the speaker. So, I contacted Dr. Ravillo, Professor Ravillo, and he said, "Okay, yes. I am so excited. We will participate." We didn't know that he was going to get all of his students to participate. There were over 40 art pieces. We couldn't even use all of them. We could only use seven to 10. And I can tell you, the guests that came from all over Tarrant County, the whole metroplex, they thoroughly enjoyed the exhibits that were presented by Tarrant County South Campus students. You should be very proud of them. The students told about their particular art. You can see some being displayed now. They put together a magnificent art exhibit. During the reception, out of those 600 people who were there, I'm sure about half of them stopped. And each of those student artists, they explained what the depictions meant. And so, they had one on military, they went from graduation, and all of them depicted survivors and how important it is for all of us to participate in prevention of domestic violence, whether it's physical, whether it's mental, or financial. And so, I am here today because Dr. Morrison was a special guest, and she was overwhelmed with the accomplishments that were made by Tarrant County College students. And you should be very proud, and I am proud. And thank you so much for allowing me to present tonight. And you see some of the pictures that are being displayed. Those are your students that are actively participating in the community and making a difference, making a significant impact. The people that were honored, two of the people were the District Attorney Sharon Wilson, the Tarrant County District Attorney, the Mayor, Honorable Betsy Price, and then there were several other ladies from Colleyville, from Arlington, all over. So, again, I give accolades to Dr. Morrison for attending, so that she was so astute to make sure that I come tonight to share the wonderful accomplishment and how proud we are of the students that attend Tarrant County College, because Tarrant County College makes a difference in so many lives. And again, I would say thank you on behalf of Safe Haven, and I'm on the committee again this year, and look forward to 2017, because we will be asking the students and the professor and the university again to participate and make that significant impact throughout this community. Thank you again.
And thank you. We especially appreciate our friends in the community acknowledging our students' success and making an effort to bring it to our attention. So, thank you so much, and to you, Dr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman. And if I may, I would like to have each of you notice that you have a purple ribbon at your place that is for you to wear in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And a few days ago, I was invited to be honored at another reception. I walked in a room with 45 people, and I knew no one. And it was a group of women who are supporters of this issue. And we're doing a collection for that event at the OC, Tarrant County College Opportunity Center. Joining with the Negro Business and Professional Women's Club, we're making collections to present to the Safe Haven. But I also, when I was at the luncheon, was awed, and I have a small video. I'd just like to share it this time, if it's okay, because you can get the full impact.
When talking about emotional abuse, you usually think of the partner, because boyfriend, girlfriend, fiance, husband, wife, not exactly parents, which is why this type of emotional abuse is the hardest to understand, but it is a form of abuse in a way. So, as you can see, her face is covered with words and phrases of what her parents have said to her. These messages convey the fact that her parents set it beyond expectations that she has to follow through, which made her develop a new identity. Therefore, she isn't herself, but a version that her parents wanted her to be. That's why she's facing it. Moving down, we have a cord that represents she's in the top 25% of her class. And to most people, that would be seen as a very good thing, a very high achievement, but it's strangling her because her parents want her to be in the top 10%. They want her to be valedictorian. And then what she shows to the world with these awards, these accolades, and there's a lot of them, that weigh her down, because she knows her parents kind of satisfy what she does. And what she hides from the world is the reality of the situation. In grade, you can see there's some As, a B, but there's also a C. And that C would only endanger her parents and could have them turned to this violence. And at the bottom, we have her social media page, and you can see her only friends are her parents. And that represents the isolation that they place around her. They think friends are a distraction. They want her to only focus on academics. They want her to be in a very, very mess. So, yearly about 3.2 million children are considered addicted to abuse in different forms. But those are what is investigated, so there's much more to that. And within that 3.2 million children, 5.6 are children who are addicted to emotional abuse by parents. And so, it's much deeper than that, and happens more often than you would think. You see a perfect student, you see an outstanding valedictorian, you must think, "Oh, she loves school. Oh, she wants to..." There's some cases that is true. Maybe the child has the emotional motivation to do that, but most of the time, it's the parents that kind of put them through the test and want them to be disfarced, which causes them to be very unhappy, even after depression. You know, from my friends that have lived through this, from the stories that I've read, it does contribute to depression, anxiety, personality disorders, self-arm, suicidal ideation, and can't even be it to suicidal actions. So, it's, sometimes it can be a good thing to have it through parents. It pushes you to do good. It pushes you to be number one, between yellow material. But if it's not balanced, and if it's up to the extreme, it can really kill the heart of the inside. And it's much deeper than that, but it happens. It is a form of abuse.
So, thank you for listening to that. I think you all know that education has been my avocation, but it's also my vocation. And one thing that really excites me is to see the results of excellent teaching, which is student achievement. And I think what we've seen today, both in the words and in the pictures, is just an excellent example of that. So, thank you for indulging me and allowing me to share that with you. And I was told there are 11 phases of domestic violence, and it is something that we all need to be aware of. And again, so I would encourage you to support awareness and also to support student achievement, and thank you so very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Board Action Items, and I would ask approval of the minutes of the meeting of September 22nd, 2016. Motion to approve. Dr. Patrick seconded by Mr. Heath. Any comments, additions, corrections? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Moving on to the consent agenda. Three items. Consideration and approval of proposed revision to the Tarrant County College District Investment Policy. Consideration and approval of proposed policy revision to DJ Local. Consideration and approval of the reappointment of Dr. Martin McClendon at the City of Ulyssia Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, TIF Number Three. And you have previously received the substantiating detail explanations of all three items. I would ask for a motion to approve all three. Mr. Heath?
Second.
Second. Dr. Morrison, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Dr. Giovinini, you want to introduce the chief?
Sure. It's my pleasure to introduce Chief Sean Williams, who had a very unique experience at the White House. He's going to tell us about. Chief?
Yes, sir. President Appleman, Chancellor Giovinini, members of the board. On September 28th, I was honored to be able to attend the White House briefing on advancing 21st Century Policing. As a result of the growing conflict between police departments and citizens they serve, on December 18th, 2014, President Barack Obama signed an executive order establishing the Task Force on 21st Century Policing. The Task Force was charged with identifying best practices and offering recommendations on how policing practices can promote effective crime reduction while at the same time maintaining trust with the community that we serve. The report itself focused on six pillars. The first pillar was building trust and legitimacy. The second pillar was policy and oversight. Third, technology, social media. Fourth, community policing and crime reduction. Fifth, training and education. And sixth, officer wellness and officer safety. The Task Force was also charged with making recommendations on how each of these pillars should be implemented within a law enforcement agency. The briefing and the breakout sessions that I attended, had the pleasure of attending at the White House, resulted in very frank discussion between all law enforcement administrators throughout the nation. And some of the discussion included on how the report had already been implemented in some departments, and some of the challenges that some of the departments were still facing throughout the nation in implementing some of the recommendations that were actually made by the report. A complete copy of the report, if you go into US Department of Justice, is about a little over 100 pages long, but the complete copy of that report is actually found on the Department of Justice website. I am very proud of the fact that the organization that we currently have here is either meeting or exceeding some of the recommendations that were already made inside the report. As with many other areas within the Tarrant County College District, I hope our team continues to set the standard for a professional police organization. And thank you once again by Chancellor Robinson for allowing me to go and participate in the briefing.
Excuse me. Any questions of the chief? We are very proud of you. And I know there are parts of your visit that you can't even share with us, and we leave it in your very capable hands and that of your Assistant Chief Dietrich and the rest of your team. We appreciate you all.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Audit and Finance. Mr. Carter?
Yes, the Audit Finance Committee did meet actually yesterday. We reviewed a couple of internal audits. One of them is one of the required audits of trustee expenses, which has to be done annually. Since the sample group is so small, we just do them all. And so, you'll be happy to know that the annual expenses for trustees, travel, everything else is about $22,000, a smidge more, a pretty light amount. Not part of the audit, but I did check five of the other 10 largest community colleges, and we are by far the lowest. So, maybe we should expand our spending, just, you know, just a thought. So, that goes down. The other report was, we had to make an audit basically of a system of reporting where students come from, which includes out-of-state and foreign students. And most of that audit worked out to be pretty good, but it turned out that we were taking a little shortcut on our out-of-state students, which means that virtually all of our out-of-state students seem to be from Oklahoma, which was not correct. So, and also, they sort of used a generic foreign code. So, we're just having some training with the people who administer that. And that information goes to the state audit board and to the coordinator board, and it turns out to three other committees. So, a fairly minor adjustment. And by the way, it did not affect funding since they use another list, but it does create some statistical skewing, if you will. So, we'll get that fixed right away. Also, we had to file an annual audit report to the state, go to the coordinator committee, the state audit board, all that sort of thing. You'll all be provided a copy of that. That annual report's about eight pages. It includes all the audits that we've done in the past year, what we've done to correct any shortcomings that we have in those audits, and also as a list of all the audits that we will do. And that goes, like I said, to the state audit committee and to the coordinating board, all those sort of things. And that actually requires trustee approval, which I would ask for at this time, noting that we can add audits or delete audits at times, as long as we just update the report to the state. So, I would entertain a... Do we need a second for that, or just?
No, since it comes from...
So, and you'll all be given a copy of that eight-page report.
Motion to approve the report pending possible changes. Well, I'm going to allow Mr. Carter, as chairman of the committee, to make that motion.
I'll make that motion, please.
Are there any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. We've done a little manipulating, if you will, of the way committees have met in this past month and are considering a permanent merging and purging to kind of be respectful of board members' time outside of the board meeting schedule and other events that we feel we should participate in. There was a governance committee meeting. We opened it to the entire board, posted as required, and we followed or proceeded, I guess, your meeting, the Institutional Planning Committee meeting, almost left him time to meet. And so, I would entertain a report from you at this time.
At our IP meeting, which was last Thursday at 2:00.
Three.
3:00. We had a whole day of meetings, you understand. We discussed revising our bylaws for the IP committee to reflect the actual work that was done. And then, we reviewed the Innovation Forum process, particularly for our newer board members, but it was good for all of us to do that. And then, we had a discussion to combine the IP committee and the Community Outreach Committee into the Governance Committee. And so, I guess, I guess we're cooked.
Well, we're going to try it out.
Anyway.
With the leadership of our new chancellor and see how it all works.
Yeah, we're still going to talk about the items that each one of those committees would normally cover. And we will be acting more as a committee as a whole, as opposed to individual committees for a period of time, anyway.
Thank you. So, all of those meetings will be posted as board meetings are. Anyone is welcome to attend. Staff may be invited to come and help us understand their particular items on the agenda. So, stay tuned, and we'll see how it all works. We appreciate your patience and indulgence. All right, let's get on to item number nine. Considerations and Approval of Deductive Change Order with Mark Inc. for renovation of Health and Physical Education Building on Northwest Campus in the amount of $79,037 credit. Ms. Petty?
Any questions to give back some money?
I move to approve.
Mr. Heath?
Second.
Approves. Dr. Patrick seconds. Any questions? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Item number 10. That's all you've got for us tonight, Ms. Petty? Short shift today. Consideration and Approval of Purchase of Computers Two-in-One Devices and Monitors from ARC, Government Solutions, not to exceed $1,500,000 per year for three years. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Mr. Heath, second. Mr. Carter. Ms. Shelton. Questions of Ms. Shelton? You're just going to let her spend that kind of money?
Well, you're going to mention that in the government. It's really...
One of the advantages of having this lengthy work session before...
That's right.
We don't have to go through it. And arrest her at length.
Yeah, we have. She did answer quite a number of our questions. But anyone want to point out anything? Or Ms. Shelton, do you have any comments you'd like to make about that?
You all are fabulous.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton.
I do think it's interesting. I really, the efforts that we make to keep our information technology really up to date, as efficient as we can possibly do, I think it's incredible how much money that we have to spend just to kind of stay even with the pace. And we'll do these things, and everybody will be raving about how fast it is. And a year from now, they'll be complaining about how slow the system operates. So, the expectations constantly increase for this, not only the speed of it, but the capacity of it.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a second. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Ms. Shelton, number 11, issues two. Consideration and Approval of Purchase Renewal of Blackboard Learning Management System in the amount of $508,172.90 per year for a five-year contract. Motion to approve? Mr. Carter?
Second.
Second. Dr. Morrison, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being with us at our previous meeting. Item number 12. Consideration and Approval of Purchase Annual Subscription and One-Time Implementation Fee for Payment Plan Suite from TouchNet Information Systems in the amount of $147,600 for year one, and a total five-year contract in the amount of $590,557. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Mr. Heath, Dr. McClendon, any questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item number 13. Consideration and Approval of Purchase Annual Subscription and One-Time Implementation Fee for Cloud Software Upgrade from Alucion in the amount of $69,200 for year one, a total for a five-year contract of $301,057. Motion to approve?
To approve.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heath, seconded by Dr. Patrick. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Monthly Financial Report.
All right. Thank you. All right. Financial for the September 2016. Our year-end audit is still ongoing and is scheduled to be finished in November. And we'll have some adjusted entries that will appear in December when we record those. All right. We are looking at the first month, which is, would be, the way that we look at our expenses, is we would take 1/12. So, we would look at any expense that is greater than 8%, but we typically use kind of a benchmark of 15%. So, now, we're going to look at revenue. So, we would look at items that you would see that are greater than 15%. So, I have reviewed all these items, but I wanted to highlight, I wanted to talk a little bit about property taxes, because that seems to be, in the news, the tax assessor and collector, Mr. Ron Wright, has informed the public that it has paid all the refunds, and all tax entities have been paid as well. So, and TCC is current on its tax collections. So, that is definitely very positive news for all of us. If we look at total revenue, it's sitting right now at 10%, as expected, and so, that is good for us. All right. So, now, we're going to look at expenses. So, we look at, we would be looking at expenses that are greater than 15%. As mentioned before, in the month of September, we record all prepaid expenses on 8/31/2016. This causes some expenses you will look, that will look larger than actual consumption for one month. A prepaid expense means that it's already been paid, but it benefits more than one period. An example could be a software or an insurance where it pays more. An encumbrance reflects an obligation that's also greater than, for more than one period. So, we want to just show you, for example, you probably noticed that a general expense in clerical is looking at 105%, and that would certainly cause a little bit of attention. But, so, I'm here to reflect on that. This means that there's an estimated BPO for the entire year for printing and copying. However, throughout the revenue year, we will be generating some revenue from printing. So, you will be able to offset that budget, but we show the total amount, because that's how you do, you would show it through, according to Modified Accrual Accountant Rules. All right? So, let's go to the next page, please. Okay. There it is. Okay. The other item that we are looking at, I'm sorry, is district support. You'll also see 91.4%. What this is, technology and software licenses that were paid last year, but they benefit this year. This is an example of a prepaid item. So, there's also $5 million of encumbrances. So, when you look at that, it's benefiting a large amount of periods. So, that's why you're seeing that 91.4%. Okay. If you look at the total expenditures, they're at 11% versus the actual 8%. So, that's why you're seeing that ninety, uh, one, ninety-one point four percent. Okay? If you look at the total expenditures, they're at eleven percent versus the actual eight percent, which we think is, is, is accord, it's, it's a good number, because we have prepaid and blanket purchase orders, so it's according to what we would expect to see. So, now we will go to the investment side, all right? So, if you look at investment, we're just gonna highlight some of the major things. If you look at your pools, you're gonna see that we've decreased about eight point seven million dollars. That means we've used this money for operations. If you look at your short term, you'll notice that there is no activity at that time. If we look at our U.S. Agency Securities, we had a call from the Federal National Mortgage Association, and that's a ten million dollar call that was there. If we look at our total balance, it's looking at, we're seeing that it's two hundred and fifty-two million dollars, so we actually decreased our cash position by eight point six million dollars. If we look at our yield, you will notice that it's point eight four percent right there, and if you look at our WAM, it's weighted average days, it's three fifty-six. We wanted to just make a comment. The target would be three sixty-five. However, we realize that the WAM is lower than three sixty-five, but we're waiting to see the possibility of a rate increase in December. There are some rumors around the Federal Open Market Committee that the governors may actually increase that, so we would have that. And I just wanted to mention, we also had the privilege to see the Fed Chairman from, from the Dallas Fed, so that was also a great treat for us today. Any questions? Yes, sir.
With the increase of property taxes, you know, the rate going up, or the amount going up for each homeowner, did we see any increase in delinquencies? And I know we have a firm that collects them, but.
Mr. Heed, I can't, I couldn't answer that question, but what I can tell you is that what we had seen is that this year was a, with the change of the software, there was a little bit of an uncommon year, Mr. Heed, and what we did see was a lot more claims than there has ever been. So, the defaults from, from the, from the higher taxes, we will have to see. I cannot answer that question, but I can get to an answer to see if, if, if this last year, did we see more claims than average? Right off the top of my head, I, I will get you that data. I think the year that will be quite interested.
This year.
Will be this year, because of the large increase of taxable value, but the, the increase of the property value that all of a sudden jumped a big number, so that could be, it would be a definite good question for the next period, sir. Is all right? But I will get you the, the exact difference. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Givernini?
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman. Dr. Gates Black will address our newest employee.
Thank you, Chancellor, members of the board. I am pleased to announce the appointment of Mr. Kenneth Evans to the position of registrar at our Southeast Campus. Mr. Evans brings more than ten years of experience in higher education that combines classroom instruction and support to students in the admissions and registration service areas. His broad-based tenure at the university and community college level includes developing curriculum for students on academic probation, administering scholarship programs, recruiting high school students, advising transfer students, coordinating services for undergraduate and continuing education admissions teams, and managing student data systems. He has served in these roles at Mountain View and Cedar Valley College, which are part of the Dallas County Community College District, as well as the University of Texas at Arlington, the University of Wisconsin in Whitewater, and at Bryan and Stratton College in Milwaukee. Mr. Evans earned his MBA from Cardinal Stitch University in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and his bachelor's degree from the University of Wisconsin in Whitewater. His interests include reading, participating in sports, and learning how to greet non-English speakers in their own language. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Evans to Tarrant County College.
Thank you, Dr. Black, Chancellor Givernini, President Appleman, esteemed members of the board. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to serve our community in the position of registrar for the Southeast Campus. It is my drive and my aim to serve the students and also the employees of this fine institution to effect a great change in our community and in the world at large. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Appleman, just a few highlights from the activities of the month, two of which were quite significant, I think, and one which was hosting Achieving the Dream Coaches and Team, and I wanna congratulate the faculty and staff on a great visit. We are one of seventeen institutions to be reaffirmed as an Achieving the Dream institution, and it's quite a feat, so hats off to all there. The second would be my heartfelt thanks to the foundation's staff and board for the State of the College Breakfast, a very successful event, and certainly demonstrated how supportive this community is of both the foundation and the college, so thank you, Joe, and your folks there. So, that's it, Mrs. Appleman, thank you.
Thank you, as you.
I have a question.
Oh, please.
So, the first pitch, was it a strike, or a ball, or what? Tell us.
It was. Oh, there it is.
You knew you were gonna.
No, I wasn't gonna get away with that. It was a forty-foot strike.
Oh.
I'll emphasize forty foot, 'cause I didn't go to the mound.
He has been a busy, busy man, and we appreciate that. He spent a lot of time listening, gave his first official speech to the donors at the foundation, and it's, it's been my pleasure to stalk him a little bit, shadow him, and get good reports back. You should know, too, that in between all of the local stuff, he's made three trips, one to Baltimore, where, where? To Boston. I don't know. Anyway, to Boston, sorry. It's all, all those East Coast cities are the same. Where he, and while there, this is the important part, and I had hoped that his award, whatever it is, would have arrived, but apparently it has not, but he was cited and honored as the best of the best in the, from, by the National Council for Continuing Education Training. So, he will soon have his first trophy to put in his new office and start decorating. Be the first of many, I'm sure. So, we appreciate the overtime that you have put in. He then went to New Orleans to chaperone some of our crowd at the conference there, and then out to Sacramento, where he participated in yet another conference, and was the keynote, you presided over that one?
The board chair.
Yeah, he presided over that. So, between presiding and presenting, and meeting and greeting in Tarrant County, he's, he's holding up well, don't you think?
Yeah.
It's my pleasure to move into the president's report, and I do have several good news pieces to share with you, but first I'm going to ask Mr. Heed and Mr. Greenhill to report on a luncheon they hosted with our legislative delegation recently.
Yeah, we have, as you all know, a Texas Association of College Trustees, of Texas Trustees, and we have a legislative committee as part of that, and we asked all our legislators in Tarrant County, there's thirteen representatives and two senators, to meet with us on Trinity River Campus, and, and not to ask for money, but, but just to talk about community colleges and the, the impact that we have on, on our community, and just talk about various issues, and, and it was a very, very successful conference. We, we, first of all, we met a month or so ago with Connie Burton, who's one of our state senators, and she's on the Senate Education Committee, and then as part of this meeting, we met with Chris Turner, thanks to Diane Patrick, ahead of our luncheon meeting, and again, just had a one-on-one conversation with Dr. Givernini and, and the committee, and I think it was very, very successful. And then at the regular luncheon, we had represent, representation of twelve of the fifteen representatives or senators, so that was, they, they thought, they, they never had that kind of representation before, so that was good. We had five actual members that attended, representatives. We, we discussed a lot of different things. We know that Dr., I mean, not doctor, but Representative Caprioloni, Giovani Caprioloni, we got two Geos. He, he's presenting a bill, and I think he's also working with the foundation to allow Tarrant County College to invest some of our financial assets, particularly the oil and gas revenues, in various financial issues that would allow us to yield a little better than losing about a percent in investment and, on our investments to, just due to inflation. So, we hope that's going through. In fact, it, it's a bill that is specifically for Tarrant County College, which is kinda interesting, but our National Association President urged Representative Givernini, Giovani Caprioloni, Giovani Caprioloni, to actually make it a statewide issue, so they, they're gonna submit two laws, one for Tarrant County College itself, and then one for the, the entire state. Chris Turner and Craig Coleman, they're working together. We discussed different issues, particularly related to dual credit, and how we might enhance that program, dual credit in early college, high school. So, overall, it was a very, very successful meeting. We got a lot of good feedback, and it's something we might, might continue to do every year, so it was very, very good.
Thank you. Mr. Greenhill, do you wanna add to that?
No, I don't.
Thank you both for getting that organized and together, and that is a, an improved attendance at one of those meetings, so we've tried that from time to time, so you all managed to make it a successful one. Now, who's going to lead off with a report of the conference in New Orleans? Who wants to do that?
Well.
I'll be happy to do that. Dr. Patrick?
We had a very good and productive visit in New Orleans to the conference, my first time to attend, obviously, and it was really, really amazing to hear presentations from all over the country as to different things and different initiatives that were occurring, but one thing that was very obvious to me was that we're doing a lot of things right here at Tarrant County College, and when you have the opportunity to hear other people just starting things that had been in place here for a very long time, it makes you feel very, very proud indeed. I attended a number of sessions, but some that were particularly outstanding were those that related to partnerships with the community, and also analytics and using data to make decisions. But I guess my favorite one was on guided pathways, because one of the presenters was Cheryl Harris, our own Cheryl Harris, and she did a wonderful job, and it was very, very informative, and I know it was very helpful to the members of the audience that were listening to her presentation along with the others. So, again, it was a very productive session, and also, I think, the theme of the conference of leading with intent, leading with intent, is something for us to keep in mind.
Thank you. And you got to go. Mr. Reed?
It was, this was an amazing conference. I mean, this is the, the program, they were in, like, the first hour, there was sixteen choices that you could attend. The second, the second hour was sixteen, again, different choices of sessions you could, you could go to, so, and then the third, third hour, there was seventeen. So, if you couldn't find something that could increase your knowledge about how to run community colleges, something wrong with you. Either that, or you know it all, I don't know. But, but it was extremely good. The ones that I, I found, of course, it was also a legislative agenda, and, and I attended the, the caucuses and, and the voting and all that, which is to set up the future leadership of our organization.
May I interrupt you on that one? Because I, at the Western Region Caucus, I nominated Mr. Heed to be the, what is it? The, on the nominations committee? And you were elected by acclamation. I just thought maybe I should go ahead.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I got kinda blindsided there, but then they elected me chairman.
Yes. It was a blind side, but it was intended to be that way.
Thank you very much, Bill, I appreciate that. But the sessions that I attended that were very rewarding, again, I attended a different pathway session. This was by San Jack College, Brenda Hillier's group, and, and they're usually, they're one of the thirty initial colleges that are doing the pathway program, part of ACC. And then it was a partnership program where they, they said partnerships begin with the board, and the network of the board members are extremely important to the college to establish relationships, working with the chancellor for additional revenue sources and all kinds of things. Another session was on strategic planning, how to achieve, achieve sustainable growth through establishing partnerships, again, with new educational programs and workforce training opportunities and additional revenue streams. And then it was a real good conference on campus housing and the pros and cons of that. It was a very good, very good session, 'cause we're considering that. So, overall, it was a tremendous conference. I think we all learned a lot.
Other comments?
One, one, one of my, in addition to those that Conrad went to, there was another one on ethics, and I'm proud to say that we don't have the problems that many, many colleges have. A major problem for many colleges is rogue directors who have their own particular agendas, agendai, sometimes to the detriment of the college. So, I was very, very proud of us for not having any problems there. I also attended several CCATT meetings, strategic planning, and a board meeting, so that's all going very well. And, that's the end of that. I was gonna talk about my trip down to Austin yesterday. I was, I gotta, I gotta, we, I made a little trip yesterday to join Reginald Gates and the chancellor with the CC, with the TACC Coordinating Board. They have a dinner every, every year during the TACC quarterly meeting, and I went down there for dinner because I was on the cap, CCATT. It was very interesting. I met some of the coordinating board people, which I had done before, and saw my friends who are presidents of the universities. But the most important thing was that when I walked out, I noticed the University of Texas Tower. I went to UT, and it was all orange. That's a very special thing to happen, and I don't think Dr. Giovani had ever been to Austin, so Reg, I think you pointed it out to him, that, did you see the tower? It was all orange. It's just very, very special. It only happens when Texas is a national champion, which is, hadn't happened in a while. Do you have a comment on the all, all orange?
No.
Especially next to Louise.
No.
Maybe against my better judgment, but Reg did text me that, and I said, "Look out the corner, they light up the tower when they win." And I wrote Reg back, and I said, "Well, looks like the light bill isn't gonna be that big this month."
You're in trouble now.
Yeah, not too many light-ups this season are lasting. And I have sent an emergency inquiry to Gordon Appleman as to why the tower was totally lit up last night. The night before, they actually honored their retiring athletic director, but I don't think that had anything to do with it, so I'll keep you all briefed. I'm sure you're waiting.
I'll be the last to retire this year.
No. It's my pleasure now to share some accolades and good news items with, with you. First of all, the collegiate, stand-up collegiate. I was going to read the list to you, but it's too long. It's almost two pages, one, several, several recognitions at various levels at the Texas Community College Journalism Association meeting last week or so, and they're keeping their phone lines open to, and emails to see about, you haven't heard about the national other awards yet.
They just left today.
Yeah. So, we'll share, surely, some of those with you when that happens. In the meantime, Tarrant County College has been ranked number nine in the United States in the number of associate degrees awarded. And, and TCC Connect is one of the top ten in the state as far as distance learning is concerned. And South Campus Energy Center, in its briefest version, has been awarded a Leeds Platinum Award, so we're proud of that. So, we're proud of that. Dr. McLendon shared with me that we are in line to receive, I don't think we've gotten the award. Where did he go? There you are. I'm sorry. We are members of the million-dollar club, be sure I get this straight, because of our commitment to and level of participation with minority and women-owned businesses. So, that's another honor that we will be sharing. And that was, happened at the United States Hispanic Chamber meeting. Do you want to add to that?
I want to recognize Mr. McKeon because he's the one who's Andre...
Andre, stand up, Andre.
Yeah. He does all the work. He goes throughout the community and...
He does. I helped raise Andre. That's why he turned out so well. And at the conference that we mentioned, Dr. Giovanni's award, three of our CIE folks, Jennifer Hawkins and Fred Schmidt and Larry Anderson, some of whom are here, stand up, gave, presented, and we had an extra special recognition letter about their presentation. And it always, you mentioned Dr. Harris at your conference. It's always such a great representation for Tarrant County College, for y'all to make that extra trip and effort to present. That doesn't just happen and a lot of preparation goes into that and we appreciate it. Stalling because Ms. Yala has a part on the agenda, but the reason she's not here, she has a good excuse. She has been named one of the top women, best women of, great women of Texas by the Fort Worth Business Press. And they're having a little get acquainted reception tonight. The actual dinner is next week, but I gave her a pass to go to the reception and she said she'd try to get here, but she'll be a little bit late. And she may miss this whole meeting if we keep going as well as we are.
While you're waiting, may I make an announcement? I wanted to publicly thank the gracious hosting by Dr. Goldman at the TCC Northeast Campus. I enjoyed my visit out there very, very much. It's so impressive to see the student art on display and also to walk around and see some of the needs that that campus has today. And of course, I left with a book in tow and I've been working my way through it. I appreciate very much the opportunity to read more about the changing face of community colleges. So, thank you so much for hosting me that day. And also, Dr. Coppola at the Arlington Southeast Campus, not only hosted, but he actually, I was there on a day that the Culinary Arts Institute folks were there. And so, they treated us to a wonderful, wonderful lunch and we just enjoyed it so much. And I had the opportunity to have my picture made and I think several of you have done the same with my favorite book, which I had selected, Oh, The Places You'll Go by Dr. Seuss.
That's pretty good timing. Teresa, you missed it about 30 seconds. We just applauded you in your honor. Was it a fun reception?
It was a fun reception, yes. It took a lot of people.
Yeah, you're in good company. I just showed them the big ad in the Fort Worth Business Press and we're very happy for you and proud of you for representing us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I think Dr. McLendon mentioned that the new head of the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas was in town today and yesterday. He did a luncheon yesterday for the chamber and then this morning a breakfast of a rather small group of people. And there were five or six of us from TCC there. And I will tell you that I've never seen such a well-run, managed question-and-answer. He wanted to know what we're doing in Tarrant County as far as economic development, workforce training, student pathways. And Tarrant County College was front and center in that discussion. And thank you, Dr. Govan and Dr. Madison. Fred was there, Fred Schmidt from CIE. I'm trying to do this from memory, which is always dangerous. But it's really so important when our people are there and look to us experts in the field in these discussions. And it's, we were kind of kidding him about being the guy from Dallas who pulled us all together. And of course, it became apparent that we're all working together already and it was just sort of an affirmation, if you will, of the collaboration that we're about. And he learned some new terms and some new ways of doing business. And then he had a lunch, which I missed, Dr. Madison and Dr. Giovanni attended. And I understand he took it to another level. It was a good thing I wasn't there because I wouldn't have understood it. He started talking about GDP and all the economics of running your country. So, you felt that was a good place for us.
Yes. And very interestingly, and the feds are a good barometer to the future and what is critical to sustaining this country. And I had the opportunity to work with the Federal Reserve Board, both in Louisville and St. Louis, in the last few years. And he reiterated today a number of things that they did, how critical the workforce skills gap is becoming to the sustainability of this country. And more and more, we're will be looked at, community colleges are going to be looked at, to solve that issue. And so, I had a little bit of dialogue on that with one of his staffers that you know, Mary Jo. And we will be meeting with the president and his staff very shortly, related to initiatives that we might be able to engage in in order to address the issue.
I think our involvement was a little bit of a fluke, but it's funny how life takes turns. About 14 years ago, I worked with Dane Hancock, who was then the CEO of Lockheed Martin, to bring this woman who was at Lockheed in Florida to town. And we managed to convince her to move her entire family, four kids and a husband, to Fort Worth. And she went to work for Dane and was sort of his communication PR person. She then went out to DFW Airport and did that same kind of work there and just recently reconnected with me and said, "I'm now at the Federal Reserve Bank and we're getting ready to come to Fort Worth, Tarrant County," which apparently had never happened before. "And I'd like for you to help me put together a list of invitees." So, with Judy McDonnell at the Workforce Solutions and we were able to do that. And that's sort of the reason there were a lot of TCC people there, that as the agenda became apparent, it was important that we were at the table. And it turns out, her daughter is on Dr. Madison's campus, so she has a very personal interest in and connection with us, too. So, all in all, it's been a good two days of working together with our partners in the community. Couple of things coming up that you might want to know about. I received an email just before I left for the meeting today. They're doing a daffodil plant along the river this Saturday. So, if you or any of your folks or if you know of any student groups who are looking for a service project, let me know and I'll put you in touch with the Streams and Valleys people who are organizing that. We did that about two years ago and I remember Chancellor Hadley and I were out there in shorts and a trowel planting daffodils. Guided Pathways coming up, Dr. Black, on the 25th, two sessions, morning and afternoon, your choice, with a luncheon and a guest speaker at noon. And then the scholarship dinner for the foundation is coming up on the 3rd, right, Dr. McIntosh?
So, I think I'm at the end of my list. Anybody else have anything you want to remind us about? Teresa with the reception?
Oh, yes. Thank you. We skipped over you, so please tell us about that reception.
Oh, the una bienvenida. Yes. We had a reception with, this particular photo is taken with the United Hispanic Council. Those are members of the Men of Color Program that were attended along with Dr. Madison. Tarrant County College Trinity River Campus hosted that event. There were over 200 people in attendance and we were fortunate to have some of our students there. And TCC was a very, very strong supporter of this function. Also, we had a reception for Dr. Giovanni at Artes de la Rosa. There he is with two of our superintendents, Marcelo Cavassos and then also Dr. Kent Scribner. So, this was truly a collaboration with the, all the different organizations. We had the, let's see, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, TCC Northwest was very, very supportive. We had student, the artwork that you see up there in the background is actually from students all over the, on all of the campuses. So, and it will be, actually, was it going to be through this week, I think? It was going to be on display at this particular facility. This venue has been in the community for about 100 years. And so, it was a perfect venue. Like I said, a collaboration with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Women's Network, the City of Fort Worth, all sorts of organizations were very instrumental. And they wanted to give Dr. Giovanni a nice little reception. Yes. And we were, it was a very nice evening. We had a really good time. Did you enjoy yourself? He made about 125 new friends that night. So, it was very, so thank you, everyone that attended. There he is. There's some students that provided the entertainment, the floral. Everything was provided by Tarrant County College as far as the entertainment, the art gallery, of course. And then we also had the floral from TCC Northwest Horticulture Department provided. So, people were just really impressed with all the things that TCC does.
As they should.
Yes, they were. Very nice.
Thank you. All right. We will go into closed session and...
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One more thing. I'm sorry. I don't know if we have anything there for, we met, there might be another photo I wanted to share. Sure. Recently attended this week, there we are with president, former president Vicente Fox and his wife and Maritza McLendon and then Mark. And let's see, who else was there? I didn't see who else was in the picture. I'm sorry. But it was a, it was a forum that is sponsored by Vicente Fox World Leaders and it was at TCU. And he spoke, Vicente Fox spoke as well as the president Quiroga, who's former president of Bolivia. And they talked about just things that are impacting Latin America. And they also expressed an interest in establishing community colleges and would like to further explore that opportunity. And hopefully, we'll be able to, they can use, you know, TCC as a model. And we hope to be talking with them further sometime in January or so. But he's very anxious to meet our new chancellor. Heard some really good things about him. And when I met him and introduced myself to him, of course, he'd already met Dr. McLendon and Dr. Morales as well, but he, he said, when I told him I was a part of the community college, he said, "We want to talk with you further." So, very, very exciting. And my father also joined us as well. He was very, very unique time because my grandfather is from the same state that Vicente Fox lives. So, it was very, very moving to see him and see the former president from Mexico. So, we had a wonderful time. Thank you very much.
Well, and you did acknowledge the award that TCC won. Is that the same meeting, Mr. Dr. McLendon, the million-dollar award?
No, ma'am.
It's a different, okay, since the pictures were together.
This was at Hispanic Council.
All right. We are going to go into executive session. Our next meeting is November 17th. So, we will do deliberation of real property, section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation of personnel matters, section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, in consultation with attorneys, section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. We are in recess. Craig, is anybody else?
Is anybody else?
To offer a motion. We make a motion to grant the chancellor the authority to execute easements to effect purposes of redevelopment of property related to the TXU building.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting.